Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to today's council meeting. I would like to convene our meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Mr. City Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Yes, Councilwoman Jimenez. Councilwoman Tomayo.
Here.
Councilwoman Torres.
Here.
Mayor Protaime Melendez.
Mayor Peralta.
And I am here. If we can please have our city attorney announce all closed session items.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This time it would be appropriate for public comments on closed session items. Do we have any requests for closed session items?
Yes, Mayor, we do have three speaker cards for closed session items.
That are listed on the agenda?
Yes, that's correct.
That would be anticipated litigation and...
All three on agenda, item one.
Wait, may I see the cards just please?
No, they're not for closed session items.
No. No, those are for the public hearing item. Thank you. So we have no closed session item, public comments, Madam Mayor. As I have been informed, the item number one will not be discussed this evening. So we will recess into closed session for item number two. Anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation one matter. And it's also my understanding that Councilmember Melendez, who is calling into tonight's meeting, will be participating in closed session.
Okay.
Be appropriate to recess.
Thank you. We are recessing to closed session at 6:01.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. We are reconvening our closed session at 7:07 PM today. Mr. City Attorney, may you please announce our closed session items?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The record should reflect that the City Council recessed into closed session for one item. Item number one was not discussed this evening and will be held over to another time. As it relates to item number two, Conference of Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation: A Significant Exposure to Litigation in One Matter. The City Council received a briefing on this item. And I should also reflect that on the item that was discussed, that Councilmember, the three councilmembers that are present here in person tonight were in closed session. Also, Councilmember Melendez was present by phoning in. And, excuse me, and Councilmember Jimenez was not present in closed session. The following is the directive from closed session. That due to recent conduct by Councilmember Jimenez, a matter has been referred to the city's special counsel, Myrna Castaneda, to commence an investigation related to her conduct vis-à-vis a member of the city management team. During this period, it is directed to Councilmember Jimenez that she cease and desist in engaging in direct interaction with the city manager and the city's administrative staff. That for the protection of the city's directors and city staff, Councilmember Jimenez shall have access to City Hall and city facilities only during working hours and only to engage with directors with a prior appointment. That in addition, all emails to the city manager must be copied with the, to the city attorney. That the point of contact for establishing meetings and other contacts within City Hall be Richie Moran from the city administrative staff. That a protocol will be established to set regular meetings with the city manager at regular meeting times in advance. That the city manager and the city attorney will be present at those meetings, that those meetings be conducted in a virtual platform and also be recorded. That Councilmember Jimenez is to be removed from all outside committees and assignments. That, and also that she be requested and directed, I should say, directed to be cognizant hostile comments. That those, the imposition of those restrictions take place tonight pending the investigation. My office will also prepare a written notice to Councilmember Jimenez and work with special counsel for distribution of that, of these conditions. That concludes my report from closed session, and it's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Moving forward with the open session of our meeting, we have our invocation. If that can please be conducted by our city clerk, and then we will have our pledge allegiance by our city treasurer. Thank you, Mr. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. As we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas, and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world.
You begin. I pledge the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving forward, we have presentations and ceremonial items. Our first one is our citizen of the month. If I can please have my colleagues join me up front to present our presentation to Ms.
Thank you very much.
So ladies and gentlemen, esteemed citizens of Montebello, it is truly with the great honor that I stand before you today as we shine a spotlight on Francis Garcia Cruz, a remarkable person whose dedication to serving others and her commitment to community service have truly made a difference here in the city of Montebello. For the past 23 years, and I'll highlight that again, 23 years, Ms. Francis has been a cherished member of our community. Her involvement in the hearts of Compassion Food Distribution exemplifies her dedication to making a positive impact on the lives of those in need, and her contributions to the hearts of Montebello organization have demonstrated her commitment to uplifting our senior citizens. Francis dedicates her time and effort to ensuring that every resident of the Golden Manor Retirement Home feels loved and cared for, particularly during holiday celebrations. Her involvement in coordinating donations, including, oh, there we go, including blankets, gift bags, and holiday, as well as birthday gifts, birthday cakes, and toiletries. It is a true testament to her generosity and compassion, but it's not just the tangible donations that make Francis's contribution so invaluable, it's the kindness and warmth that she showers upon each person. Ms. Francis, I do want to just acknowledge, thank you. I do just want to personally acknowledge the love that you've given to our community. As a business owner, you've harnessed your resources to truly give back. She makes, she's made these backpacks for our seniors that literally say, "We care for you." She makes blankets, she produces all these other different gifts, and she just puts so much love and so much energy behind this. To truly use her resources as a business owner to give back to our community sets an example for our businesses to follow. She also has an incredible daughter who volunteers right alongside her and is truly a role model for, for the rest of our community members. I do just want to give you a heartfelt congratulations, and I'm very, very proud to have you be our citizen of the month during Women's History Month this month.[891.61][891.61][applause] And so, I do want to go ahead and call up her daughter, so she can join us for some, a photo with her. Okay, up next for our presentations, we do have our YMCA Youth and Government delegation. And so, prior to, prior to saying a few words about this incredible delegation and providing them with some recognition, certificates of recognition, I do want to allow them the floor to present to us as city council, as well as to our community, the incredible work that they do, as well as the bill that they've been working on this past year. So if I can please call up our Youth and Government delegation to please come forward,
Good evening, Mayor Peralta, council members, and community. I am going to speak the least out of this group. I am the lead advisor, my name's Lorraine Richards, I am longtime community, actually born and raised, Montebello. And also, I want to recognize Arnold Glassman, he was my advisor when I was in this program, when I was in high school, which was only 10 years ago, right, Arnold? So, so, I want to acknowledge that piece, and I think, I feel a lot of the leadership skills that I have in my life today are from the foundation that I attained well in youth and government. And so, each of them are going to tell you a little bit more about the program.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say, my name is Amelia Argot, and Mayor Peralta, council, and community, thank you for the invitation to be here and share about our program. The program we are part of is the Youth in Government, or Model Legislature and Court Program, through local YMCA's across California and all over the US. This program allows high school students like ourselves to serve in model government positions, while also giving students the opportunity to gain knowledge on what they can do in their government, as well as allowing many of us to step out of our comfort zones and experience something new. Our delegation meets every Monday at 5:00 PM in preparation for this program. I also want to give a big thank you to Councilmember Jimenez and Thamayo for coming to Sacramento to see us in action earlier this year. And I'm going to hand it off to Jonathan Cruz.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Cruz, and I'm going to talk a little bit about Camp Roberts, which is our pretty much first introduction to the entirety of the Youth in Government program. So, when we arrived to Camp Roberts, what, the purpose of us being there is so that we can get introduced to the program areas that we have selected. So, there's many different program areas where you can do different things, that model the government, the California Legislature. And basically, what we're doing is, we're coming up with ideas, and we're preparing ourselves for Sacramento, which comes later in February. And it's really that step that just begins the entire program for everyone, and it's a time for you to get to learn more about your program area and what you've decided to do, but it's also a time for you to get to know more about your delegation, because you spend about three-ninths in Camp Roberts. So, you really get to know about the people in your delegation and get to make friendships. So, that's a little bit about it.
Hi, my name is Ladin Castillo. I'm going to be talking behalf of the seniors in the delegation. As you guys may see, I'm wearing a cord. This is offered to our senior delegates for graduation. It's, it's to show our hard work and dedication we've shown throughout our, our journey in youth and government, and, yeah.[1301.83][1301.83][laughter] Thank you.
Good job.
Now, we're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves. So, my name is Amelia Argot. Like I said, I am the president of this delegation. I'm a junior at Montebello High School, and when we were in the delegation, I was a part of the legislative program. I was the bill sponsor, and I was part of the Senate House.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Cruz. I'm a senior at Montebello High School. I am planning to go to Cal State LA and major in mechanical engineering. I am the vice president of the delegation, so I assist the president in anything she needs. My program area in Sacramento was the Department of Finance, and one takeaway from Sacramento is the importance of building strong friendships with those in the delegation, because it allows you to be yourself and express what you're thinking without fear of judgment.
Hello, my name is Gana Salania. I go to Montebello High School. I am a senior, and I plan on attending Cal State Fullerton, majoring in communications. I am clerk in our delegation. I keep track of time, I write in our agenda, and keep our meetings on track. In Sacramento, I was in international convention, and one thing I really took away from our program is having stronger communication skills and having better time management. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew Cortez. I'm currently an 11th grader attending Montebello High School. Within the entirety of the MLC program, I am in California Investment Bank, and we essentially try to pitch a company, if we are a company, to see, to a group of representatives with a large sum of money, and basically try to sell our product. And my position within our delegation is chaplain, and essentially, I just try to make everyone feel a little more included, and feel like our delegation is more than just a program, but more as such a family, and we create really a bond. Oh, and I, throughout the entirety of this program, I really learned that it's not all about legislation, and while it does teach us about what our legislators, legislators do, and just why and how much we should appreciate them, but it goes further than that, and it really pushes us to take a step into our community and really help out there, too. Like, all of us here had made handcrafted and stamped cards for our two local convalescent homes on Beverly Boulevard for the elderly, so, yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name's Lizzie Vargas, and I'm currently a junior at Downtown Magnates High School, and my role within our delegation is the historian. So, in other words, I do social media management, so everything we see on the Instagram. In the program, I was also a part of the Supreme Court, where I served as an associate justice. And my experience within the program, there was a lot of takeaways, but I think one of my main takeaways is a found a sense of community, but also a way to be civically engaged. And we learned that through the program. We have, we have so many takeaways outside of the program and to step into our community, whether that's like city council, or even our school community in general. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Harry Lam, and I'm a sophomore at Montebello High School. And in our delegation, I'm the fundraising coordinator. So, basically, I just like organize and like create the fundraisers. So, like this year, we had like around like about three fundraisers that like I like created, and like helped like direct, like everyone throughout the duration of those. And as for my program area, I'm in, I did national assembly. So, what we do there is, we're given two broad topics, and we pick one of those topics, and we find a solution to, we find a problem and create a solution. And then, in like throughout the duration of this program, I learned like how to like a lot of like, I learned like how to see the world like in a different lens, with like all the connections I made from people with like different backgrounds.
I'm Ava Gonzalez from Montebello High School. I am a senior. I do plan to attend Pepperdine University to major in law. And during my year at the YMCA delegation, I was in DOF, and that's basically where we made a bill that we hope to help the deficit in California. So, during this past year, I learned that there are a lot of opportunities to help me impact and change my community and meet people who had the same interest as I had. And if I were to tell a new, a delicate to join this program, I would tell them that you will make so many friends, and you'll have the opportunity to discover so much about yourself. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ereviel Pando. I'm a senior at Ramon Secortinas VAPA, and I hope to attend the University of Oregon, majoring in child development. And I, in Sacramento, I was a committee chair for the legislative houses. I was specifically in assembly. And my biggest takeaway from Sacramento was just like the confidence we gained in public speaking skills, because we are constantly in a position where we talk to new people, talk in large groups, and presenting like today, and it just, it really helped develop my public speaking skills. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ladin Castillo. I'm a, I'm a senior attending St. Francis High School. I hope on attending San Diego State University and pursuing a career in sports medicine. And in, and in youth and government, my, my program was in Constitution Convention, and in there, we basically, we scratched the whole Constitution, and we built it up from scratch. And one thing I learned from SAC is to not judge a book by its cover, because it can seem very intimidating at first, but you make a lot of friends throughout your way, and it's really opened me up to think differently in how our government was made. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and Mrs. Mayor. My name is Fernando Olgin. I'm a junior at Montebello High School. My program area in this program, in the Youth and Government program, was appellate court. And I've had that program for, when I was in Camp Robertson in Sacramento. And I learned to not have a closed mind, but to rather have an open mind when meeting new people, as I value everyone's opinions. As I made friends in that way, in the appellate court program, that I would have not made otherwise if I had been in my shell. And for that, I'm eternally grateful for this program. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ben Richards, and I'm an 11th grader at Montebello High School. Within our delegation, I'm the sergeant-at-arm, so I keep decorum during meetings and make sure everything stays on track. Within the program itself, I was also in California Investment Bank in the same company as Matthew, and I was actually the CEO of our company. And we did get a bond for our company, so that was a big plus. And I think the biggest takeaway from Sacramento was really how to thick, think very quickly on my feet when it comes to question, and being able to answer some really hard questions in creative ways, while maybe I didn't know how to answer, but I was able to find the answer. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Azel Reyes Rivera. I'm an 11th grader at El Rancho High School, and I'm a
I'm an 11th grader at El Rancho High School and I'm a delegate in the Youth in Government program. In Sacramento, I was a part of the appellate court. And if I were to take away one thing from Sacramento, it would really just be the bond that it helped create with the delegation that we have here in Monobello. The public speaking opportunities also made me a more confident speaker, especially when speaking in front of larger crowds that you're not familiar with. And if I were to share a word of advice to a new recruit joining the delegation, it would be to speak your mind. I firmly stand by the belief that any and all ideas are valid.
Good evening, my name is Miguel Garcia. I am from Monobello High School and I'm a junior. I am a delegate and my department in Sacramento was Constitutional Convention. One big takeaway from Sacramento is we had a tremendous amount of fun and is a very positive environment and we all had a chance to express ourselves. From Sacramento, I learned that collaboration and participation is key, which showed me how to execute this to my best ability. What I would share to a new recruit to join the delegation is that this program will allow you to better your speaking ability, the understanding of politics, and most importantly, know perspectives and opinions of many different people. Thank you.
My name's Melissa Daley. I'm in 10th grade, attending Monobello High School. I was part of a national assembly with Harry in Sacramento. We were given two broad topics and we picked one and we found a solution for it. It was my first year and being in Sacramento, it helped me see the world in a different way. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Cruz again and I'm going to talk a little bit about the bill process. So our bill was fixated on the concept of eliminating or largely reducing forest fires. And the way we came up with that bill, the beginning of this process starts with ideas. We get the ideas and we write them down. And then we think, how can we make this legislation? And not just how we can make it legislation, but effective legislation. So every week, we'd gather these ideas and we debate them, we talk about them, see the pros and cons. And then eventually, we narrowed it down to one. The bill that we chose was forest fires and the inspiration behind that was actually from me. I came up with the bill. It was because I have a brother-in-law in Oregon and he actually is a wildland forest fire. So we were tasked with coming about a current event to present to the delegation. And my current event was about the fires, forest fires in California. And I called my brother-in-law and I asked him, what do you think you could do about this problem and how do you think we could fix this? And he gave me some insight and I realized this problem is a very serious problem that affects the state, but it's also a very fixable problem. And there's a lot of stuff that we can do to prevent this. So once we decided that that was the bill that we wanted to take to Sacramento, we began to debate it and we all wrote pros and con speeches. And then we presented those speeches refined to our parents and to other members of the community on our bill night, which was in January. And then we took it to Sacramento where it would first start in committee and then it would go to the Senate and then it would go to the Assembly. And if it had been passed through all those, it would then go to the youth governor. Thank you.
So like I had previously said, I was the bill sponsor for our delegation and I was a part of the legislative program. So in the legislative program, or in the whole program in general, our goal is to get a bill and hope it, hopefully get it passed from Senate or Assembly first and then go to the next house and from there to the youth governor's table. And hopefully from there, it could pass on to something that could possibly become real legislature. So I'm going to go ahead and share our bill this year. This is what I read to the Senate House and it got passed to the Assembly. As we all know, climate change and global warming are increasing at a higher rate than ever before, causing mass amounts of natural disasters, specifically wildfires. Wildfires are catastrophic to the state of California and that is evident in the effects it has on our ecosystem. The drier seasons are longer, causing forest fires to spread rapidly. And billions of dollars of damages are being made to public and private properties. We are losing more and more of our beautiful state parks at the hands of forest fires each year. And 90% of forest fires are man-made, which means they are preventable. In our efforts to resolve this issue, we have come up with a bill that aims at the reduction and prevention of the negative effects forest fires have. Our bill requires all state parks and campgrounds to add fire waste bins for the purpose of wildfire prevention. These will be eight-gallon fire waste bins equipped with a shovel to properly dispose of all hazardous materials like charcoal, firewood, liquid propane, et cetera. These bills will be placed 150 feet away from all designated campgrounds and picnic areas in order to ensure the safety of disposing the flammable and/or combustible materials. Incorporating this bill into all state parks and campgrounds will cost 1.5 million. The initial cost of 1.5 million does not compare to the billions already spent and tens of millions for the expenses of new wildfires every year. These fire waste bins are not only cost efficient, but overall beneficial for civilians. Too many lives have been put at risk due to forest fires and you can't put a cost on a person's life. The end goal of our bill is to heavily decrease wildfires and the potential risks that comes with fighting these wildfires and protecting our wildlife and beautiful state parks. Remember, only you can prevent fire wildfires. Thank you.
So hello, my name is Matthew Cortez. I am the chaplain, as I had previously mentioned. And we would like to thank you guys for your support throughout the duration of this year's Model Legislature in Court. And we'd like to personally invite you to our banquet at the local Monobello YMCA. It's going to be Monday, March 18th at 7:00 PM. And we're going to really highlight the accomplishments and talents of those in our delegation and we would really love to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I please get a round of applause for our Youth delegation?
He has a copy of the bill and the information for Monday on there, so...
Yeah, absolutely. If our deputy city clerk can do that. And if I can please have my colleagues join me so that we can take a photo with the delegation and recognize them.
Yeah, exactly.
We've got a lot of you guys here today.
Can you capture it like this?
I think we're ready here. All right, everybody, right here on the count of three. Here we go. One, two, three. We got it. Thank you. I'm going to let the family number two get some applause.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. It was incredible having one of us present.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uncle Tony?
Uncle, Uncle Tony?
This month is National Development Disabilities Month. The City of Monobello proudly recognizes National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Every March, the National Association of Councils on Developmental Disabilities and its partners collaborate to lead Developmental Disability Awareness Month. The annual campaign highlights how people with and without disabilities come together to form strong communities. This year's theme, A World of Opportunities, focuses on people working together to remove obstacles to building communities where everyone can do well and succeed. This recognition serves as a platform to raise awareness about developmental disabilities and the challenges individuals with such conditions may face. Through education and advocacy efforts, the city aims to promote understanding, empathy, and acceptance. By shedding light on the unique abilities and contributions of people with developmental disabilities, Monobello strives to build a more inclusive society where everyone can thrive and participate fully in community life. To learn more about National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, please visit And I am proud to say that this year is the first year that the City of Monobello will be hosting a resource fair and celebration for our families with children and young adults with disabilities. This will be taking place next Saturday at the Senior Center, no, I believe Chet Hollyfield. And I do welcome all our families to please join us. We will be having opportunities to receive resources as well as an opportunity for families to come together and build a support system. Moving forward with our last presentation for Women's History Month. This month really takes that center stage as we honor the remarkable achievements and enduring legacy of women, from commemorating trailblazers who defend societal norms to celebrating contemporary leaders who continue to inspire. The city comes together to recognize the profound impact of women across all spheres of society. This year's Women's History Month theme celebrates women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion. The theme selected by the National Women's History Alliance recognizes women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. Through a series of events, discussions, and initiatives organized by local institutions and community groups, Monobello provides a platform to amplify women's voices and highlight their contributions. Residents and visitors are invited to engage with exhibitions, lectures, and cultural performances that delve into the stories of remarkable women and reflect on the ongoing journey towards gender equality. As Monobello pays homage to the past and celebrates the present, it reaffirms its dedication to fostering an inclusive and equitable community to where women can thrive and succeed. To learn more about Women's History Month, please visit womenshistorymonth.gov. And with that, we are moving forward with our public comments on non-agenda items today. Mr. City Attorney, if you may please move this to our public comments.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. And actually, it should be noted that item number seven will be held over to another date in the future. This time, it's the opportunity for the public to make comments on non-agenda items. If you haven't already filled out a card, speaker cards are available here that would have to be turned in at this time. These are comments on non-agenda items. Do we have, Mr. City Clerk, do we have cards?
Yes, we have a couple of cards for non-agenda items.
I'm so sorry, I didn't hear that.
Would you like me to...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Please commence.
Yes. First speaker is James Sandoval, followed by Cecilia Lopez.
My name is James Sandoval. I'm the International Vice President for Smart Transportation Division. That's the union that represents the drivers that sent the City of Monobello, including many other transit agencies here in California and across the United States. And my role in this union is to come and assist the local union leaders when things get difficult. And I will say, you know, we could acknowledge things were getting pretty difficult the last couple of months. But I will say, so far, we've seen positive change happen to where we're remaining hopeful that things are going to go in the right direction. And I just want to remind the City Council that our drivers have been, and I don't say just our drivers, our transit workers at the City of Monobello have been through a lot, including, you know, being frontline workers during the pandemic, dealing with unruly passengers, dealing with assaults, you know, and, you know, just being understaffed. They've been, you know, called upon to be picking up the slack because there's a lot of holes right now that we need to fill to get where we need to get. And with that being said, you know, I just want to thank our new city manager because we had a great meeting where we talked about the vision of where we want to go. And I appreciate your leadership because I could see that you want to take the City of Monobello and, you know, and our drivers and our transit workers in the right direction. And I just want to say that we're also partners in this. You know, you won't see us drawing a line in the sand saying it's us versus you or you versus us. We're partners in this. Because if we can't work together, ultimately, our community loses. Nobody wins when we don't work together. So I'm here asking for you all to get back to the table so we can start negotiating a contract because we settled majority of our problems. All that's left on the table is a contract and a contract that's going to reflect the hard work that our transit workers have put in. And it's going to be a contract that's going to help the City of Monobello recruit and retain the drivers that they need. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sandoval. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Cecilia Lopez, followed Beatriz Vasquez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff, Smart TD, sheet metal, air, rail, and transportation workers, Transit Department. Cecilia Lopez, General Chairperson of Committee of Adjustment, GO 876, Local 1701, representing bus operators, service workers, mechanics, and storekeepers. I come before you all to commend and applaud you all for your, for your leadership. We have faced many challenges and difficulties, uncertain of what the future holds, every single one of us. Every time we took a step into Transit Department, we weren't sure what was coming to us. No one should be working under those conditions. However, you have hard-working, loyal, dedicated employees that refuse to give up and I commend and applaud you all. Thank you. There is a light at the end of the tunnel, which takes me to the city manager. He has proven himself to be just and fair by giving us the opportunity to present our cases with an open mind. Through collaboration with Assistant Human Resources Director John Soria and Attorney John Baquet, we have been able to amicably settle all unfair labor practice charges. Thank you, John, as well, for working with us. Under this new administration, we've gotten more accomplished than we can possibly imagine. Again, thank you all. This is the only, this is only the beginning and I hope that this working relationship continues moving forward with the city and the union. To commence negotiations, there are 10 organizations throughout the city and Smart TD is the only one without a labor contract. I am confident that the City Council and the new administration will continue to move forward, bringing progress to our community and providing that long overdue quality service that Monobello Bus Lines once had and we will reclaim as being one of the best transit agencies to serve our city and surrounding neighboring communities. Thank you for your support and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Beatriz Vasquez, followed by Antonio Herrera.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council officials. My name is Beatriz Vasquez. I'm the Vice General Chair for Smart TD and I'm also the Local Chair for the Shop on the Transportation on the Transportation Department, which I represent mechanics, service workers, and drivers. Last year, we, in our department in transportation, we would put through a lot. It was where you got to work and you didn't know what you were expecting. It was stressful. It was not having stability. It was losing really, really good mechanics, drivers, service workers. We lost employees that had 15, 20, even 30 years of service. We lost them only because they weren't sure if they had stability, they weren't sure what they were facing. It was an everyday face-to-face. You don't know what to expect, and we all have families at home that depend on us. So now, getting back, we, we've all came back to work. We were all put in administration leave, we're all back to work. So at this point, one member told me, at this time, we, at the end, like on the last month, we were able to breathe. We were able to at least be, have some kind of stability. So I'm here only to say thank you to our new city manager that even though we didn't meet him at the beginning, you know, he took the time to look at all the problems that were occurring at transportation. I also want to thank John Soria for working, for listening to us and listening to all our problems. And all I were asking is, give us some stability, give us some contract, give us something where you can retain our drivers, you can retain our mechanics, you can retain our service workers, and you can retain our storekeepers. Because in transportation, you have really good workers that all they need is stability. So all I'm asking is, work with us and give us something that we can all stay, we can all retain our job and do what we were here for, and we were hired, you know, so many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. If we can please call up our next speaker.
Next speaker is Antonio Herrera, followed by Marquesha Haynes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Antonio Herrera, President of Local 1701 and Bus Operator at Montebello Bus Lines. First, let me put my glasses on. First, we want to thank the city and the new city administration heads for showing an effort in improving our workplace. They have demonstrated this by returning all the employees that were wrongfully placed on administrative leave. Though it was wrongfully done, the city has turned around and shown they want to cooperate with us and not give us another issue to fight against. So thank you for that return of the employees, which also helps the community in having a better running transit system. The new administration heads have also expressed interest in settling negotiations as soon as possible. It's been over two years since our contract has expired. Our membership and your employees urge you to return to the negotiations table and settle on a better and improved contract. We believe you want what's best for your employees. We are also waiting on you to return to the table. In the past, in the late 90s, early 2000s, Montebello Bus Lines was recognized on a national level by the American Public Transportation Association as being one of the best transit agencies. We won awards, safety and achievement awards against other transit agencies on a national level. If you go onto the website, apta.com, it'll show all these accomplishments. So Montebello has something special and something to be proud of in its transit system here. So we believe and we hope that we could get there again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Our next public speaker.
Next speaker is Marquesha Haynes, followed by Barbara Ruiz.
Hello, Mayor, City Manager, and all council members present today. My name is Marquesha Haynes. I serve as a general person, General Chairperson for Smart TD Local 1785 out of Santa Monica. I drive for the Big Blue Bus. I am here to stand with Smart TD Local 1701 to start negotiations. After a trying few months, I would like to all thank you for bringing our members back to work. My fellow members are dedicated and committed to their craft, their communities, and most importantly, their families. In order to continue that dedication, that means better working conditions, benefits, and wages. I believe working together, we will be able to reach that goal, a better quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Haynes. Our next public speaker.
Next speaker is Barbara Ruiz, followed by Vincent LaRoca.
Good evening, Mayor, City Officials and Staff. My name is Barbara Ruiz, Local 1701, a bus operator for the City of Montebello. Since 2020, bus operators and customers have endured too many changes, from four different directors to numerous unthoughtful route adjustments, I'm sorry. Customers are frustrated and tired of all the different time adjustments, and so are we. We have lost numerous bus operators to either retirement and/or other agencies. This has been mind-blowing, but I'm, we, are hopeful that 2024 has positive change and that this long patience, but frustrating, four years of a wait for a raised increase was worth it. I thank you for bringing back the bus operators that were out on administrative leave. It has surely made a difference out on the line. But be aware that the longer the negotiation continues to be delayed, Montebello will continue to lose bus operators. All this does is takes us back to the beginning with not enough manpower to meet the demand. As always, thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Vincent LaRoca, followed by Rosemary Gurola.
Thank you. So I'm here to urge the council to consider a few items for discussion or future council orals. So number one would be a rent stabilization ordinance. A rent stabilization ordinance, or also called an RSO for short, would help the residents of Montebello. According to a report by the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, over 55, actually, 55.7% of residents are renters. So, and as you probably all know, we are currently in a housing affordability crisis due to the dramatic rise of inflation before the pandemic, but also exacerbated by the pandemic, and also lagging, the lagging of wages. So we need to ensure that our residents have an affordable place to live and are not displaced as the city sees new developments like Topgolf or the Montebello Hills that may attract wealthier, well, that is going to attract wealthier newcomers. So more wealth in the city will increase demand for units, for housing units, for homeownership, for renters. And if the current rate of rental properties in terms of rent increases, if it's not controlled, we're going to see significant displacement with these new developments coming in the works, and it will affect our most vulnerable residents. So the cities of Belle Gardens, the cities of Belle Gardens, Cudahy, Pasadena, Los Angeles, South Pasadena, Beverly Hills, and Santa Monica all have rent stabilization ordinances. And for example, in October of 2022, so two years ago, Belle Gardens adopted an ordinance which set an annual rent increase cap at 50% of the change in the Consumer Price Index or 4%, whichever is less. And that, so the current, currently in Belle Gardens, that is, that cap is about 1.9% per year because of the change in the CPI index is actually less than 4%. So we should follow the lead of these cities and provide our residents an affordable place to live by putting a limit on these annual rent increases. And this will help our residents have greater peace of mind and not be fearful every year about potential jumps in their rent. So that's the first item. So I only have 30 seconds left. Let me see. Another urgent thing that I see from a lot of residents is the desire to participate in our city council meetings and our community meetings. However, due to the in-person requirement for most of these events, they have no opportunity because of their work-life balances and stuff like that. So I listened to neighbors, I took some, I had a petition and got some signatures that people are actually asking for Zoom or WebEx meetings to participate, give their comments, give their feedback. So I hope that we can discuss this at future council meetings and put a plan in place to address the need for remote participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoca. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Rosemary Gurola, followed by Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rosemary Gurola from the Montebello Library, and I'm here to tell you about our Smarty Pants Storytime. The new session will start on March 29th, and it's for two- to five-year-olds and their caregivers. So everybody can sign up in advance on that, and it's very popular, and usually all the slots are taken. So start signing up soon. And this Saturday, we're going to be celebrating Spring Faith, Culture, and Community Programs. And this is a chance for the kids who are from eight to 12 years old to learn about Ramadan, Baha'i, Nanwaz, and holy, and they will learn about different cultures, different faiths, get them exposed to the diversity that we offer in this fine community. And on a personal note, I'd like to let all of you know that I am retiring at the end of the month. Yes, and Mr. Glassman and I have seen each other in Pico Rivera, which was, I don't even remember how many years ago now. I came here, he was here. I had to spend a couple of years in Monteb, I mean Huntington Park. He was in Huntington Park. I came back here, he's here, so it's like our careers have been together for... Picture. Okay. Oh, yes, please, thank you. And so I have enjoyed all the years working here. I was born at the old Beverly Hospital. My grandparents and cousins, everybody lived here. So I was in the city every Sunday to visit family and finally ended up working here, and I have enjoyed it. And I look forward to seeing you at one last meeting, the end of March. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rosemary Gurola. Thank you for the service that you've given and the years that you've given to Montebello, and I'm wishing you a fulfilling and joyful retirement. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Rosa Tamayo, followed by Martha Cortez.
Buenas noches. Soy Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening, Rosa Tamayo.
Mayor Scarlett Peralta en miembros del Consilio. Les quiero decir que hay un problema muy grande aquí en la ciudad y yo creo que en diferentes ciudades pero...
Mayor Peralta and the council members, I think there's a grave error here in the city, just like in other cities, I believe.
El departamento de vivienda, de vivienda, de housing, los vouchers de sección ocho no los están aceptando muchos de los departamentos y negocios que están rentando a las personas.
The Housing Department, Section 18, is not accepting some businesses to the people.
Y muchos de estas personas son descasos de recursos y son veteranos.
Many of these people are veterans and low income.
Y se quedan con los vouchers y no los pueden usar porque nadie los está aceptando.
They keep the vouchers, they stay with the vouchers, but they cannot use them because no one's accepting them.
El otro problema que yo estoy mirando es que los servicios de, que los contribuyentes está, ya están pagados como el agua, el gas, el drenaje, las tuberías están en muy mal estado.
Another thing I noticed is that...
Ya se los he dicho varias veces.
That the payers for water, gas, drainage, the...
Y deben de investigar.
Are in very bad conditions. I've told you many times, you should investigate, you should research.
Que no nomás rompan el cemento y cobren el dinero.
Not just to break the cement and charge the money.
Que hagan bien su trabajo.
But rather that they may do their job well.
Porque nosotros no somos tontos, podemos investigar qué está pasando.
Because we're no dummies, we can investigate to see what's going on.
El otro problema con ustedes es que no están trabajando éticamente.
Another problem with you guys is that you guys are not working ethically.
Mi distrito cinco paga mucho tax, demasiado tax, igual que el norte, igual que el de este o el oeste.
My district, District Five, is paying a lot of taxes, just like the northeast, north-south.
Y saben una cosa? Si cayó la administración del hospital del Beverly, puede caer esta administración también.
You know something else?
Tengan mucho cuidado porque ya me están cansando, y yo así lo hice con el Beverly.
And if the administration of Beverly Hospital filed, this administration can fall as well, fall as well. Be very careful.
Me estuve tiempo, pero con los derechos civiles no se juega, ni se juega con el dinero federal tampoco. Así que ustedes...
With civil rights and with the federal money, you don't play around with that. So you guys...
Así que ustedes están en la mira del hoyo porque saben que lo que ustedes están haciendo son muchas violaciones y muchos crímenes municipales. Trabajen con ética.
And you guys are on the eye of the whole because you guys are...
Y usted, Raúl Álvarez...
Not working ethically, doing a lot of crimes.
Dejó la víbora chillando en las otras ciudades como Huntington Park y Inglewood. Todavía no se completa bien su caso allá. Yo también tengo familias, no mías, pero familias adoptadas, y tiene que, usted hacer su...
And there's other situations like Huntington Park and Inglewood where I have family, not my own family, but family others. So you guys need to...
Usted lo sabe muy bien qué fue lo que hizo allá.
You know quite well what was done over there.
Esta ciudad es bien difícil porque tenemos nuestros propios servicios de departamento, de fire, de policía, de agua, y es difícil, pero no somos como las otras ciudades.
And this city is very difficult because it has its own departments, fire department, police department, the water, but we're unlike other cities.
Y ya es la segunda vez que yo les llamo la atención, que no ignoren el Distrito Cinco. Mi amiga, la semana pasada, habló con usted, Mayor Scarlett Peralta, por un problema que había en una banqueta.
And this is the second time I bring this up. Last week, my friend...
De graffiti.
...mayor asked Peralta about graffiti.
Así que no se crean que porque no están aquí, no están escuchando lo que están haciendo ustedes con el dinero de los contribuyentes.
So don't think that because they're not listening. Pay attention to what's going on with the money, with the money of the contributors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tamayo. Can we please have our next speaker?
Next speaker is Martha Cortez, followed by Linda Nicholas.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. I'm Martha Cortez. I'm from Smart TD 1701, and I'm here to talk about asking for a new contract. Please get one quickly. We've lost many drivers, many good drivers. I myself have dedicated 14 years of my life to the City of Montebello. I have zero customer complaints that are in my file, and I too am seeking other employment because times are hard. The paycheck, I can't survive. The last meeting that I spoke at, I said, it's a struggle. It's a struggle, and I'm a single parent, and it's very hard to make ends meet. I had, this year, cut my insurance for my kids and got Medi-Cal. I've never been on Medi-Cal in my life. If you need it, that's fine, but I'm working at the city. The city, we're supposed to be moving forward, not backwards. So I welcome the new administration here. Thank you for showing us that you are moving in a positive, moving forward in a positive way. So I'm hopeful, but I ask you to please get to the negotiation tables because we don't need to lose any more drivers. Our customers need us out there. Right now, I get the feedback from the customers, and what they are saying is, at least there is... is consistency right now, so bringing back those drivers, John, thank you, because the customers did notice it, but we know there is a lot of holes at the transportation department. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cortez.
Next speaker is Linda Nicholas, followed by Ana B. Jurado.
My name is Linda Nicholas, co-founder of Match 90640. You know, this morning I got a text telling me, "Please continue to speak at the meetings. You keep us, the community, aware of what's going on. We wouldn't have any idea of the contracts and the things that are being done illegally." I say illegally because you all know very well, what you're doing is illegal. And when you're indicted, that's when you'll get vindication, Ms. Jimenez, because you won't be one of the ones that are going to wear matching bracelets. Now, as far as, and the reason I come up is to put it on the record, because when those charges are done, none of you can say, "I didn't know." I'm up here telling you the facts. And as far as the city manager, I don't remember when Torres was attacking the former city manager and 17 employees. I don't remember ever hearing that anytime he met with anybody, that Mr. Glassman had to be there and they were going to be taped. How come he wasn't given the same consideration of protection? And yet, how many millions has Torres cost us so far? Near five? I hope Mr. Alvarez isn't going to start costing us millions too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Can we please have our next speaker?
Next speaker is Ana B. Jurado.
Good evening, Mayor Scarlett and council. I don't address this, it's a very simple request. I see you approve dispensaries and all these contracts and stuff. All I'm requesting is that, can somebody put in to renovate, maybe dress, clean it up at the parking stall for the veteran that sits at the west side of the Montebello City Hall building? It's kind of shabby looking. In fact, a couple of months ago, somebody mentioned that to me, and I've been forgetting. So, I'm just hoping maybe we can find something to renovate it and bring it up. Also, I'd like to also celebrate and thank Match 90640, Linda Nicholas, the founder, and wish her a happy birthday, as well as David Sanofsky, our recreations and community service, who does a wonderful job for our city. One fights for our city, the other one brings it, brings it up and puts us on a map. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jurado, and our next speaker, please.
Mayor, that does conclude all speaker cards for Dona Gen items.
Okay. Thank you all for all the public speakers for tonight. Moving forward, give me one second. Staff communications on items of interest. Mr. City Manager, are there any items?
Nothing to report at this time, mayor.
Okay. And moving forward, we do have a public hearing tonight, which is item number eight, First Reading and Introduction of Ordinance Number 2475, Amending Chapter 17.37, Having Trucking Uses and Chapter 17.49, Brownfield Overlay District of the Montebello Municipal Code to Clarify, Simplify, and Specify the Conditions and Requirements for Zoning Compliance of Heavy Trucking Operations in the City of Montebello and in the Brownfield Overlay District. I believe we do have a presentation by our Planning and Community Development Director, Mr. Joseph Palumbi. You have the floor. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, this amendment is intended to resolve discrepancies in the Montebello Municipal Code, specifically related to heavy trucking and related uses in the 55-acre Brownfield area. Back in September, with direction from City Council, September of 2023, staff worked closely with the city attorney's office to approach this matter holistically, with the intent of resolving zoning inconsistencies in the code to avoid prolonged uncertainty related to those existing uses that are within that area, as well as concisely clarifying the conditions and requirements for zoning compliance of such uses. So, lockstep with the unanimous recommendation from the planning commission that took place March 5th of this month. Staff believes that the proposed amendments are appropriate, and we recommend approval from the city council. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Prior to putting this on council's level, I will go ahead and open our public hearing at 8:15. At this time, anyone wishing to speak about the item may address council. Do we have any pre...
Yes, mayor, we do have four speaker cards for this item.
Okay. If you can please start our public comments for this item.
Absolutely. First speaker is Frank, followed by Bobby Nasir.
Hi and good evening. I'm Frank Moss. My family has been owners of property on Bluff Road for 45 years. My son, who's sitting back there, is the third generation to be involved with the property on Bluff Road. I served on the advisory committee to, in the late 80s, for the general plan where we dealt with trucking issues, and again was instrumental in the overlay zone, which was originally passed through the effort of a few of the property owners there to bring to the attention of that council the unique nature of that property. I'm here simply to thank the council and to Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Palumbi for being so considerate in taking up the time to realize the unique nature of this property. I'm hoping that we're going to get a positive resolution. I'd like to thank you very, very much for us, and I especially want to thank you for the 10 tenants that I have on those properties who didn't know whether they would be in business, they were very concerned. So, you're putting to rest something for some small business people that is even more critical to them than it is to us, so I thank you for that and for taking the time to educate yourself and learn about the area. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Frank Moss.
Next speaker is Bobby Nasir, followed by Matthew Wickersham.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I'm Bobby Nasir. My family has been down in the south end, in the Brownfield area, for approximately 35 years. I just wanted to take a minute to support this ordinance and thank both Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Palumbi, and Ms. Duque Mejian, who's from the city attorney's office, who have worked with us to finally get some resolution to an item that has been lingering for some time. As Mr. Moss said, there are quite a few businesses down there, particularly at last count, the estimate was there were 109 Montebello residents that worked down in the area, and the outstanding items were really a scary item for everyone because of the events that occurred over a year and a half ago. So, just wanted to take a moment to support this and thank staff and the team for getting us to where we need to be, and urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nasir. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Matthew, followed by Peter Bocchi.
Good evening. My name's Matt Wickersham. I'm an environmental attorney representing A1 Property Development, which is a longstanding business operating in existing trucking use within the Brownfields Overlay District. On their behalf, we want to say fully support the ordinance put forward tonight, and we appreciate the work done by the city attorney's office and planning staff and the city manager in bringing these changes forward. We think that it goes a long way towards fixing the inconsistencies and some of the conflicts that were in the existing ordinance, and recognizing that the existing trucking uses in this area are a valuable part of the business community in Montebello, and these proposed revisions are appropriate in recognizing that the general code provisions must make some allowances for the unique circumstances and the industrial nature of the area. So, we appreciate that the code, and we request that the code should be implemented and amended in a way that allows for existing uses to come into compliance, and which would allow for a path forward for these currently non-conforming uses to no longer be frozen in that state, which could open the door for more capital investment and more opportunities to modernize and improve these operations. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wickersham. And we can please have our next speaker.
Our next and final speaker is Peter Bocchi.
He has the lead. Okay. That concludes all of our speaker cards, mayor.
Okay. Oh, okay, if there, is this for in support or opposing at the same time?
This time, Madam Mayor, it would be appropriate to ask anyone from the audience if they wish to address this matter. Please step forward and state your name.
Linda Nicholas, address on file. Ms. Tamayo said to make sure to mention that there's a lot of radishes down there. My question is, this is a toxic situation, the issue of the Brownfield. Is it going to be cleaned? Are you going to allow this to continue? Because you have residents that live very close to the area, so for the safety of the city, because contamination leeches, I just want to make sure that they can stay, but make sure that they clean up the toxic environment, because I don't think anybody wants that in our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment, Ms. Nicholas. So, moving forward, I will go ahead and close our public hearing at 8:21, and now I will go ahead and bring it at council level for any questions or motions. Looking to my colleagues that are present, no questions? Yeah, I can go ahead and go just formally through the list. Ms. Jimenez is not in the room. Councilmember Tamayo, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Councilmember Torres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just, not sure why Councilwoman Jimenez had to stay away, but it's unfortunate that the District Five representative, who's often called on to represent their community, is not sitting here and making comments on this item. I do want to say that I do want to commend the council last year on taking very quick action in rescinding the abatement letter that the businesses in the Brownfield District received last year, when it came to our attention that they were asking to close their doors with essentially two weeks' notice, and that hundreds of employees would be losing their jobs, hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars in investments over the last 10 or 15 years that had happened on those properties could potentially be lost. It was very appropriate of this council to put a pause to that action and to take another look and consider what was going on here. To the resident that made mention of the toxic environments and the ways that it could affect the residents, the city council did receive information that there are quarterly audits done by, I believe, the county as to the toxicity of the ground. Even considering that, and also being considerate of our residents, the council took further action to approve a study of the area. We are strong partners with our small businesses and our local businesses, as well as strong representatives of those that reside in the neighboring communities and are potentially affected. So, with this evening's action, I just want to thank city staff for taking a close look at what is a very complex and complicated issue with a long history of different legislative actions, both by the city, by the state, and potentially the federal government as well. And so, thank you to our city attorney and everyone that's involved in putting something forward that, as some of our other commentators mentioned, clarify provisions in our local ordinance that were confusing, disruptive, and even in some instances conflicted with past communications from the city. So, the point that we stand at today, I think, is a significant point, a significant inflection point for the businesses in the Brownfield area to consider that 55 acres worth of businesses are, will be more secure by the action that we're taking this evening. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Torres, and Mayor Protamalendis is not here. And just to concur with similar comments that have been made, just thanking our staff, our city manager, for really taking a look into this very complex situation and ensuring that hundreds of jobs and businesses are being saved in this, through this item, as well as ensuring that the city does take a look and ensures the environmental compliance of this area to ensure that both areas, both themes can coexist. So, with that, I will go ahead and open the floor for a motion.
Please, Madam Mayor, before you...
Yes.
Madam Mayor, before you make your motion, I wanted to provide a little bit more context on, well, that will hopefully inform your decision. I want to say a couple of things first. I want to thank Joe, his staff, Mrs. Duque Mejian, for this ordinance that's coming for you. You know, this is a culmination of many hours of work, a hard effort, and sometimes what is lost in this process is the countless hours that are spent, not just in an office, but in being out there, talking to the business owners, having community meetings, directly engaging, getting by in this process. And within that context, I also wanted to mention, because there's a strong component, something that, you know, immediately as we were working towards trying to have a resolution, is also being mindful of the environmental concerns in that area. So, another thing that I wanted to commend Mr. Palumbi and his team, they were successful, and correct me if I'm wrong on the exact amount, but they did, were able to receive a $600,000 grant from the, a technical, a technical grant from the EPA. So, while this work has been going on in terms of drafting this ordinance, getting it to council concurrently, Joe and his team have been working with the EPA to do an environmental assessment that is currently going on, and I believe it's still maybe four, five months pending in terms of that culmination. There's boring that's currently being done, that is examining the site, and based on those results, we'll be able to come back to council and make some recommendations in terms of what remediation steps we need to take. So, the efforts are not lost. I will also say that countless community meetings were held. I know initially, there was some hesitations from some of the property owners, or the business owners down there. I can happily tell you, towards the middle and the end of the community meetings, the business owners were more amenable, right, to have a conversation with city staff to concurrently draft this ordinance. So, we're not forgetting about the environment issues. It's something that, you know, we're going to be addressing, depending on what the findings are. So, I do want to thank staff, and I wanted to assure council that it's something that's being done. I do want to clarify, though, the environmental assessment is not contingent on the allowable use of this ordinance. So, it's something for us to clarify in terms of how we move forward in this process, but we'll be coming back once we have more results, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. If I, I will go ahead and open it up for a motion to approve.
I'll motion.
Okay. Can I please get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Torres and a second by Councilmember Tamayo. Mr. City Clerk, may you please take roll.
Councilmember Jimenez. Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
And I vote aye. Uh, no. Yes. And moving forward, we do have our regular business, so we do have item nine, review and discuss city council and successor. Oh, actually, I believe this...
Yeah, mayor, I was gonna mention that that item was, that item's gonna get tabled to a future meeting.
Okay. So, we are going ahead and tabling item nine. Moving forward with consent, Mr. City Attorney, may you please poll council for any items?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This time, this is the consent agenda, and should I, let me first ask if there's any cards to speak on any, any item of the consent agenda.
We do not have any speaker cards.
Thank you, okay. So, this time, we have items 10 through, let's see here, 10 through 17, and any member of the city council that wishes to address any of those items should pull them at this time, and I will pull the, poll the council for if there's any consent items. We'll start with Councilmember Tamayo.
No items.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres.
No items.
Thank you. Mayor Peralta.
And I have no items.
It would be appropriate then to entertain a motion to approve items 10 through 17.
Okay. Can I please get a motion to approve items 10 to 17?
I motion.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Tamayo. Can I please get a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Torres. Mr. City Clerk, may you please do a roll call.
Councilmember Jimenez. Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
And I vote aye. So, that concludes our regular, our consent calendar. Moving forward with any AB 1234... Moving forward with any AB 1234 travel reports, just looking across here, none to report. We also do not have any council orals, but I do want to go ahead and just make a few recognitions prior to adjourning. First off, just do want to thank and give a big shout-out and happy birthday to our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. David Tsunowski. Thank you so much for all the work that you do for our community. I know you've given the city of Montebello years of service and a lot of labor of love, and you have a community here that really appreciates all the incredible work that you've done in our community. So if we could just please give him a round of applause to celebrate his birthday. And Councilmember Torres, I believe, also has another celebratory recognition.
Yeah, I just want to tell my sister a very quick happy birthday. Juliet turns 32 today, so very proud of her and love her. Also, lifetime resident, so I wanted to wish her, as well as David, a very happy birthday. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, and prior to adjourning, I do just want to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Didier Rayer Hanaul. He was one of my alumnis from Sher High School, who recently just passed away at the very early age of 30, 31. I do just want to send my deepest consolences on behalf of the city to his family and would love to just have a moment of silence for his honor and memory. Thank you very much, so we are going ahead and adjourn. If I can please just have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, so we are adjourning today's meeting at 8:31. Thank you, everyone, for your participation, have a good evening.